Welcome. This is the ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools Monthly School Board Meeting. We welcome all of our community. We livestream, we don't livestream. We will be livestreaming, I think, when we're up at the new District Service Building, but we do record this so that our community can also see and listen and get updates as to what's going on for our Duluth Public Schools. It is Tuesday, May 16th. It's 6:30. Again, this is the Duluth Public Schools and this is our regularly monthly school board meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Zdowski and she'll take role.
Member Edar is excused. Member Kirby's excused. Member Laffler Kemp here. Member Lowball.
Here.
Member Oswald, here. I am here, Member Stanhall.
Present.
Superintendent Mays.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Deputy Clerk Zunich, present. Executive Director of Community Resources, Savin, present. Board Secretary Pitt, here. Board Secretary Manson, next. And then we have some student reps.
Elsa Priest.
Elsa Priest, here. Perfect. That would be it. Oh, no, we do have one more. I didn't see there Lauren.
Lauren Malat.
Lauren, here. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And then again, we appreciate that board members often have, not often, sometimes board members have a conflict in their schedule of travel. And so we have a seven-member board. We do videotape so that our board members that have to miss a meeting can also get caught up on the business of it. So we appreciate the dedication of all school board members. There's a lot of meetings, but we also are very committed to our attendance and to the work of being on the school board. So again, thank you Clerk Zdowski for our roll call. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is right behind Assistant Superintendent Bonds. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm looking, we've had our board work for a few days and so I'm looking for an approval of our agenda, a motion.
So move.
I am, Member Oswald has made the motion, a second, to approve the agenda as it stands.
Second.
Member Laffler Kemp, seconds. All those in favor of the agenda as printed in our board book, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Onto number five on our agenda. It is school and community recognition and we do this every month and we try to, you know, have a wide variety of opportunities to recognize all the good staff and community members and students that achieve well or have a special recommendation. This month, our award recipient has a conflict, so we will work with that and bring them back in June. So we're going to move on to number five and that is our public comment. And as public comment, there is a sign-up sheet in the back. And then we can also ask at the end of public comment if anyone else has been inspired or has been thinking during the time to then come up and also give public comment. Member Zdowski will share with you our, no, first of all, Member Oswald will share our Tools of Civility vision.
Community vision and priorities for Duluth schools. We will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and reasonable use of resources to create Duluth Public Schools and classrooms that are safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. Eleven Tools of Civility. This school board recognizes eleven tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include, one, pay attention, two, listen, three, be inclusive, four, don't gossip, five, show respect, six, be agreeable, seven, apologize, eight, give constructive criticism, nine, take responsibility, ten, be honest and care for others, and eleven, show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you. And then Clerk Zdowski will also go over just the general rules and kind of guidelines that we have posted on our website concerning public comment tonight.
So here's some information you need to know when you sign up to speak at a board meeting. Persons wishing to address the board will sign up before the board meeting, listing their name and the manner on which they will speak. And that has been brought up here, but if anyone missed that opportunity, we will give you another opportunity to sign up a little bit later as well. If you have handouts for the board, please give them to the school board secretary. Persons wishing to address the board will speak in the order in which they signed up. Persons addressing the board will have three minutes total. When speaking, the use of names or any information that identifies a specific individual is legally prohibited and will be asked to end your comments. Persons addressing the board may not merge their time in order to allow one person to speak more than three minutes. The clerk of the board will start the stoplight timer at the start of each person's time. Green means go, yellow means wrap up, and red means stop. And you'll see that right here. The clerk of the board, oh, I already did it. The board chair will give you a single gavel tap when there are 10 seconds of speaking time remaining. So you'll see it go yellow and when there's 10 seconds, Member Lowball will give a little tap.
And that doesn't mean you have to stop it. This is the tap for the 10 seconds.
Yep, and when the red light comes on, then the chair will gavel to signal you to end. And persons addressing the board shall combine their comments to matters pertaining to the agenda or other matters relevant to administrative concern. And in the interest of respect for every public comment speaker, please hold any commentary during the speaker's time until they are finished.
Thank you. And again, we are appreciative of our community that comes to share their concerns, their challenges, their questions, their support. And so it's in that spirit that we come together to listen, learn, and just celebrate and also take very respectfully the comments and the information you want to share with board members. When we get to about 3:05, you're just going to see me gently stand and then ask you to wrap up as well. So thanks a lot. I always say too that I announce the speaker and then someone who's like on deck so you know that you're next. So our first speaker tonight is Elizabeth Peterson and on deck is Katie Cleveland. Yep, and we can use the mic because when we do have our community listen to our meetings, at times they can't hear what's being said.
My name's Elizabeth Peterson. I'm the Digital Innovation Specialist at Lincoln Park Middle School and our residential programs, including Merritt Creek, Chester Creek, Rock Ridge, AJC, and Superior Academy. A few of us watched the recording from the HR Business Services Committee meeting dated May 9th and we decided to come back tonight to express a few concerns we have going forward to highlight some of what we do as a department and to clarify the differences between what we do and the adjacent positions of Building Technology Coordinator and Technology Field Technician. Half of our team was unable to join us this evening due to other obligations, including coaching the middle school track meet that's happening outside. We have nine members in our team plus two coordinators and each of us brings something different to the table. In the past two years, we've each found a niche in what we do, including but not limited to data collection and spreadsheets, creating content videos for professional development sessions, repairing damaged devices, creating weekly tech tips, and fostering relationships with staff and students to build trust in a blended learning initiative. Together, we have learned the ins and outs of a wide variety of digital curriculum programs that our district uses and subscribes to, and we work closely with teachers and staff to promote learning in a digital environment. As a team, we communicate with each other on a daily to problem solve, troubleshoot, and ask questions, creating a unified team that works to efficiently identify and resolve issues despite working from just different buildings spread across the district. We took this one-to-one initiative from the ground up. We were hired at the start of it and we'd like to see it through. A typical one-to-one initiative is rolled out gradually over the course of several years, but our district pushed up Chromebooks to all students, grade 3 through 12, in one summer on the backs of COVID. We had no structures or procedures in place to do so, so much of what we have done as a digital innovation team has been learned on the fly. The members of our team whose positions were cut are starting to leave the district as they find new employment. They will be missed and the loss of their expertise will create a hole in our knowledge base. For staff and students, this means it will take longer for us to resolve issues if they come up, resulting in lost learning time and increased frustration. This will also lead to burnout as we grapple with an almost 50% increase in our workload. We will need to shift our priorities as a department from one that is proactive to one that is reactive. As staff and students lose trust in our ability to get things done, this program will crumble from the inside out.
Our next speaker is Katie Cleveland and on deck is Robin Ryan.
Hi, I'm Katie Cleveland, Digital Innovation Specialist at East High School. While Chromebook management is a large part of our job, supporting blended learning is another big portion. DI support has allowed for trust and relationships to build between our staff and our teachers, which has encouraged staff to try new things with technology, knowing that we are there to help. The support comes in a variety of ways, from large group tech PD sessions, individual support, classroom support, and our digital innovation website. Blended learning is currently being used in a variety of ways in our classrooms already, including our modern classroom program that teachers can sign up for. Our team has helped teachers use Screencastify, Google Screen Capture, and converting Google Slides to Seesaw. Sphero lessons have also been incorporated into science classrooms. Some members of our team have had the opportunity to go in and support teachers in these lessons, from troubleshooting Sphero issues to Chromebook issues to also helping with those lesson activities. Students have also had the opportunity to create video projects for English and art classes, and I know that blended learning is being used in many other ways. Those are just a few examples. The DI team is able to research and put together resources for teachers that are aimed specifically for our district. As a former teacher, I assumed that Google Earth was a geography resource and not able to be used in my English classroom. In this position, I've had the opportunity to explore those features and I realized I could have used that. And as a teacher, I did not have time to explore a resource that I didn't think would be useful in my classroom. And in this position, I've had the opportunity to help teachers use Google Earth in their curriculum. And that's just one example of one of the digital tools that we've been able to help teachers with. Each district has different needs, so finding a general video on YouTube isn't always an option. For example, a YouTube video might use an extension that is not available through the district. A video that our team creates will show how something can be done using the tools, applications, and extensions that are already approved within our district. Getting through COVID was an overwhelming experience for both teachers and students. While we have had success implementing blended learning strategies, coming into a third year with our Chromebook management practices in place and a teaching staff that has somewhat recovered from the shock of the pandemic would be a great time to recommit to advancing blended learning in the classroom. Keeping our whole team together ensures that blended learning goals continue to grow and are achieved within our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Ryan. On deck is Jim Jewenville.
Hello, my name is Robin Ryan. I'm the Digital Innovation Specialist over at Denfeld. I want to talk about what next year is going to look like. One of the things that's going to be hugely impacted, our elementaries are going to be disproportionately affected by this change. Next year, we are planning with the five specialists that we have instead of the nine we have currently, the best plan we can come up with is because we need one of us at each secondary pretty close to full timers, so we can get it, one of us each at East, Denfeld, Ordean, and Lincoln, and we will take one day out of our week to go to an elementary. Our fifth person will be covering the five remaining elementaries. This means that we will almost entirely be out of the elementary classrooms, which has been a huge benefit that has been, that our elementary team has been doing this year. We're also losing our ability to specialize across high school, secondary versus elementary, things like Canvas and Seesaw where we didn't need to know multiple systems. So we're going to be spending catch-up time trying to learn those systems that we just didn't need to know when we have enough staff. We're also going to lose the ability to effectively support a lot of things like the MCAs and testing. Our team was moving across the district, going to support each other in different buildings, making sure we're there when testing started, when problems happened. And we just are not going to have the staff to be able to be there in person anymore. We're worried for the same reasons about summer schools, starting up at the elementaries especially, that we will not have the people. Our staff are already starting to go and take other jobs. So if we're going to make a change to keep these people, it needs to happen soon. People are leaving already. We're also going to have significantly less time to push forward blended learning, teaching staff, teachers, and our students how to use the technology better. This is already a little bit true with our current staff and will be so much worse next year. First, we need to make sure that people have devices to use and so a lot of our time is spent making sure Chromebooks are checked out, that people have what they need, that things are working, and then we can teach them to use it better. Next year, we will only be doing those first orders, just making sure people have what they need things. Even getting us back to seven or eight specialists would let us specialize and break our team at elementary and secondary again. We need those people. Ideally, we would have 12 or 13 people so we could have a person at every site every day. That would be the ideal. Even nine was already kind of understaffed from a lot of other districts' perspective. I was going to talk a little more about digital innovation versus field techs. They're both valuable positions and I'm running out of time. Digital innovation, we keep the Chromebooks running in the classrooms, keep everybody what they need, and we teach people how to use the devices better, which is a huge important thing in this world as it is these days. The field techs are part of the technology department proper and they keep the technology on the walls, running the smartboards, the phones, the desktop computers, all those In closing, we appreciate that there will be in the general budget the five of us in our board leader. We can't stop there. We need more to do this job properly. Thank you.
And then our next speaker is Jim Jewenville and on deck is Julie. I've seen the name before, I should know if I know my name.
Hello, my name is Jim Jewenville. I'm a special ed teacher at ALC AEO. I'm also the co-facilitator of the Labor Management Committees. Mr. Anthony Bonds, our Assistant Superintendent, and myself are both in our second year as co-facilitators of the Labor Management Process. I believe we have accomplished more this year than the previous school year, partly due to the trust and working relationship that Mr. Magus, Mr. Bonds, the ESG President Ethan Fisher, and I have built up. We met a few times last summer to improve the process and discuss goals for our Labor Management Teams. We doubled the amount of times the QSC meets during the year to establish this committee as managing the teams. Additionally, we added an action tracker to keep track of larger issues to make sure they are being dealt with and eventually solved. We have been able to eliminate three out of the seven items on the action tracker so far this year. As part of the process, we email all QLT members two weeks prior to the meeting for agenda items. And after the agenda is compiled, we share it with the committee a week prior to the meeting to allow people, especially Mr. Bonds, to look into issues that require feedback from management. We have stressed the importance of addressing issues first at the site level before bringing it to Labor Management. We've attempted to foster a climate of openness and make it clear that we have nothing to hide. Overall, I believe staff feel they are being heard through the Labor Management Process. We continue to fine tune the processes as we move forward and also ask for feedback from the committee members to improve the product. Some of the larger items we have solved through the Labor Management Process this year is the agreement to a new elementary schedule, which is better for both students and staff. A setting four program that will be implemented at Rock Ridge this fall for at-risk students that need the additional support in a smaller, highly structured setting known as the STEPS Program. Also, improved communication with administration about additional FTEs, job postings, layoffs, bumping, et cetera. Some items we need to continue to work on are the middle school schedule, the e-learning plan, which we're meeting tomorrow afternoon on, smaller class sizes at all levels, an improved MOU for early childhood, caseload limits for birth to 21 case managers, and the long-term home that is an appropriate location for an ALC AEO school. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Julie and on deck is Maria Pink.
Hi, I'm a parent. Over the last 13 years, one problem stands out as the most frustrating. I'm here to share my experience in the hope that you'll make changes to special education busing. Students in special education are expected to leave their last class 15 minutes early to ride the special education bus. My son's last class is aerospace physics. 15 minutes a day is one hour and 15 minutes a week. That's more than five hours of missed instruction time in a month. This is a huge problem and I have not allowed it. It took years for it to really sink in and to fully understand the impact. But once he was in sixth grade and couldn't keep up in art because of the missing time, it really hit me. And in seventh grade, when he couldn't partake of the food they cooked in fax, I started pushing back. Every year, I had to fight and argue and push. It's weeks and months of emails and phone calls to get change and then we start over again the next semester. I don't want you to miss that this is a huge hit to my son's dignity. Regardless of what he's told about being valued equal to his non-disabled peers, he's still the kid that is expected to leave class early day after day after day. My son was slow to advocate for himself in part because it's all he's ever known and also because even when I do get the bus to wait for him, he has to face those people who are sitting there waiting for just him. I can't tell you the kind of pressure that that's put on him over the years. This has been a problem for every grade, every school, every year from day one. When I say something, the response starts usually with some gaslighting. I'm told that special ed buses don't leave early. Then yes, they do, but it's only a few minutes. And then yes, it's more, but it can't be helped. That's just the way it is and you're soon will be fine. I've been told a wide variety of reasons over the years, but none of them hold water. I don't know the real reason why. You probably do. Maybe you can explain it to me because no one has ever been able to tell me why my child is not entitled to the same length in school day as his non-disabled peers. What can you do to do better in the future? Treat students equally. There are teachers and administrators that have tried to help fix this over the years, including his current Devon Howard-Hare teacher, but nothing sticks long term. The problem persists.
Our next speaker is Maria and on deck is Betty Green.
Hi, this is Marie Pink.
Oh, it is Pink, okay.
Sorry, this is Lowball. I still roll sloppy. I wanted to talk about special education busing as well. I have twins with special needs, one who's deaf and one who's on the autism spectrum. And I agree with Julie, our kids are expected to leave early every day and the older the kids get, the more embarrassing it is and the more necessary it is for them to be in their complete class. According to PACER, P-A-C-E-R dot org, the length of the day should not be altered to accommodate the district or busing schedules. It should be determined by the IEP team. It should obviously include the parents and the child. So now just me, I believe the driver should be told that some kids are going to stay their entire day and that they need additional time to get to the bus. I think the busing schedules should be made with the kids in mind. If a child needs to stay for an entire class, they should be allowed to do it. Some of our kids are in National Honor Society or college-level calculus. If they have to leave early, they don't know what the assignment is for the next day. They have short time on tests and these are the kids that need it the most. They need the most time, they need the most assistance, and they're getting shortchanged. The resource from PACER is given to parents at every IEP meeting to determine parents' rights. I believe that the district should help schools to follow the guidelines set forth by PACER and if a child does need something altered with their schedule, the parents and child should be told and should be involved in that conversation to determine if it's appropriate. I really hope that you kind of think about those last 10 minutes of the day and how our kids need that. The end of the day is so anxious when you're trying to get all your stuff and you're trying to get to the bus and it's really stressful, but knowing that you have to stand up in a class full of kids and get up and walk out and it's not your choice, it just doesn't seem right. So think about our kids and help us when you can.
Our next speaker is Betty Green and on deck is Michelle Riley.
Superintendent Magus, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, Chair Lowball, and members of the school board. My name is Betty Green. I watched the whole meeting on May 2nd, which had a number of great presentations. I'm speaking tonight about the D'ivoi language programs. I would like to lift up the voices of the Indigenous Language and Culture Subcommittee of IAC, the Education Equity Advisory Committee, and reiterate their request for more substantive support of these language programs, both the Sabakon and middle and high school of D'ivoi language classes. It's important to maintain a strong commitment to holding these classes no matter their status, to providing greater financial support for curriculum development, and to communicating regularly with families, gathering their input whenever possible. As the Subcommittee notes, the Duluth Public Schools can rectify the effects of past educational policy, which had extremely harmful impacts on Indigenous peoples. Current ISD 709 achievement outcomes and graduation rates are abysmal for these student groups, and strong financial support for these language programs can make a real difference. I recently heard a parent describe the difference in her children's experiences, one in the Sabakon program and the other not. I know you have a strong desire for equity and here is a prime opportunity to put that into effect. I recognize that there are many important needs, but please make support of these language programs and the Subcommittee's requests a top priority. I believe the impacts of the programs will be well worth the investment. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Michelle Riley unless there is someone else that would want to share their concerns or comment. Thank you.
Hi, I want to thank everyone here tonight for your dedication to our students. We cannot provide a quality educational experience without everyone doing their part. My plea for you tonight is to please consider adding a clear and reasonable form and year above use during class policy in our high school buildings for next school year. Our current district policy needs to be clarified and clearly defined. There are many policies throughout our state, neighboring communities, and some of our own schools in the district that we use as models. We do not need to start from scratch. There are policies that work. If there's a clearly defined policy, it'll be easy to follow by all and will benefit all of our students' educational experiences in so many ways, including improving classroom learning environments, student engagement, and creativity. Creating and enhancing academically honest learning environments where students can develop and use critical thinking skills and try their best without AI technology. Improving students' mental health and wellbeing by creating a positive face-to-face environment where social skills can be learned, improved upon, and practiced, skills which are necessary for success in high school and beyond. All of our students currently have fair and equitable, state-of-the-art technology provided by our district that is easy to regulate and monitor. Students do not need to use their own personal technology during class. There is a major loss of situational and educational awareness because of the nonstop use of personal technology. Please help us control the learning environment in our classrooms so we can help our students learn and develop educational skills beyond the social media and games that so many are doing to you. Thank you.
And I think I saw someone who'd like to come up. Thank you. And because we don't have your name, will you please state your name? Thank you.
Yes, you bet. Good evening. My name is Kristy McManus. I'm a parent.
I am JJ McManus. I carry the.
Student.
Yep.
We are here tonight to also support and bring our voices to the issues of the special education busing and leaving 15 minutes early. I'm going to talk really quickly and then turn it over to JJ because his story is important, as all of our students' stories are. But the first thing that I want to say, I mean, we talk about it every day, diversity, equity, inclusion, access, right? Accessibility. It's so important. These kids need it. That last fifteen minutes is crucial, and we saw it in JJ's grades. We saw it in his attitude as he was coming home and not being treated as the rest of his peers were. So with that, I just want to turn it over to JJ so he can share his story and what has happened to him with losing those last fifteen minutes.
All right. So those, in fact, those last fifteen minutes, I, I noticed that, I noticed that there's some, some important stuff left in the lesson that I, I had during the, during the class periods. I, I noticed that a lot during, when I was over at 14, because my class, every last hour class, I noticed that the, that there were still teaching more stuff, and I was like, why, why am I not getting this, this information? And why do my other peers are getting more information than me when I'm, when I'm leaving fifteen minutes from my class?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Again, it's important for public comment, and we are appreciative of those that come forward to share. And we, as I congratulate my board as boards that want to hear public comment. It is not a requirement of any school board to offer that, but we've made a commitment our, my whole time in the district to public comment because we, we need the voices, we appreciate the voices. So thank you for coming forward. Our next agenda item. Whoa, okay. I've, I've encouraged, okay.
I was waiting until you were done speaking.
So please state your name.
My name is Ruth.
Is it not on?
I don't, I don't think so, unless it is.
Little button, did you see the button there? It probably didn't.
Now it's, okay. My name is Rebecca Brunt, and I just had, you'll forgive my ignorance if I don't follow the rules. My, I just had some comments to make about a decision that was made by Dina Sibo.
Yeah, we can't, can't mention our names.
Thank you. The situation at East that has come to combine the two student government organizations, Exess Board and Association, into a class period during the day. The decision was made in a hasty manner, which.
That's still kind of generally critical of someone we easily identify.
Okay.
So to help you.
Thank you.
Share why you wouldn't, why you would think that this decision or just this, the practice would be beneficial to your student.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. The problem that we're running into is the need to make it a class during the class day was then affected their ability to get into other classes. And all of the students that were involved were willing to do it before and after school and were not, in order to, there were classes they weren't able to get into. They had to then choose between being a part of the student government, and these are all very ambitious kids who are willing to do the work and put in the extra time. And they were then unable to, to get into some of the other classes that they wanted to because of the way that the scheduling was done. The, and just, they had then wrote up a, an alternative plan for it to be evaluated at a more extended time period. And the, yeah, I'm trying to go through it. The ask is that they would be able to have some input into the way that the, the change is made, rather than have it presented to them as that this is the way that it is. Because it, as, if you recognize the name, it's my daughter that is the representative on the school board. And she, she has worked many, many years in order to, to maintain some of the positions and have the opportunities in front of her. And it was, rather than work towards other ones, and it was just then all of a sudden taken away. And so the opportunity that they're looking for is to have more input in how that goes about, rather than just having it put in front of them as what is going to happen. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So moving on in our agenda, our next agenda item is reading communications and petitions, and we have none for this month. And so then we go to number eight, which is the report of the superintendent. And under that is the reports of our students' school board members, then our superintendent's report. Then we have the family scholarship that you see the crystal bowl in front of that you're probably wondering what that's all about. And then I'll just review some scheduler meetings. So lots, lots of things. Superintendent Magus.
Yes, and I really appreciate everybody being here tonight. And thank, appreciate all the public comment as well.
Do you want the mic, do you think?
I'm glad to take the mic, sure. One sec.
This, this facility is, is stronger when we watch it on YouTube for voice, but I, I do notice that sometimes it's not. And again, we're trying to make this accessible to our community, so I want all comments to be clear and understood.
Testing.
There you go.
Yes, we will have much better audio in the new facility in just a few short weeks. But it's always really exciting to have, the, the public comment is very helpful, even though we can't specifically address anything unless it's in the, the agenda. We always try to follow up based on those concerns, and so that's something that we take into account.
And we appreciate that. That's really important as board members, that we, we do follow up when we can on public comment.
But one of the most exciting parts of the presentation is always our student representative reports. And so we have our two student representatives tonight from East and Denfeld. We have Elsa and Lauren, and I'm not sure who's first this, this month.
I think you've got it on, well, I don't know. You, you put it on the, on your report. It looks like it's Elsa and then Lauren.
All right, so here is my report for the end of April and the beginning of May. We've all been working really hard in school for the month of May so far. Obviously, it's really busy this month of the year. The new student government board was selected, and the new members have begun to participate in the boardwork for the end of the year, which is really exciting. We had our last student forum meeting where the school year was discussed as a whole. Just some feedback that students gave is that students have expressed a lot of concerns in the forum about vandalism and destruction from other students, especially in the bathrooms. Students have also expressed a complaint in the impurities notes in different organizations in the school, especially the arts. Music students and visual arts students have reported often not having access to the needed supplies or witnessing teachers buying supplies out of pocket. Students have also mentioned the fact that it appears athletic programs often have much more funding than other programs. A positive mention from the students was that the freshmen said they felt very guided and included through our Houndback program for the freshmen to help them get used to high school. Compact has begun talking with leaders about great plans for next year. Prom was held on Saturday, May 13th with a deck, and it was a great event and a wonderful venue. Your books are also recently came in, and those will be distributed soon. Spring music concerts are coming up. We have orchestra concert tomorrow. The band concert will be on May 23rd, and the choir concert on June 1st. The spring sports, including softball, baseball, track, and Wolfpack lacrosse are all underway. For unified sports, the basketball invitational was on May 5th, and the jockey field invitational is scheduled for May 23rd. The girls' football game will also be held this Thursday at East. And the junior cheerleading from East will be hosting the Harvard Town Rotary Meeting tomorrow morning for their meeting takeover day, featuring guest speaker Emily Ford. And the students at East have greatly appreciated all your hard work on the board this year and are excited for the coming summer.
This time, I have all good things to report. The biggest being that Denfeld's graduation rate has increased three percent in the last year. We also completed another successful year of AP testing. On Tuesday, May 9th, our advanced choirs had the amazing opportunity to sing with the band Foreigner. We were invited onstage to sing with them during band class, "I Want to Know What Love Is." This was definitely an experience none of us will be forgetting anytime soon. As for opportunities, yoga, which was originally only being offered for six weeks during when on Wednesdays, has been extended to last through the end of the year. Our climate, the climate survey was sent out to families last week, and our students took it during science. The 23, 24 link leaders were chosen. Juniors and seniors could apply to this role all throughout the month of April via an application that was sent out. There is a new animation-based club for students to join if they have any interest in animating. More information on that is coming soon. Denfeld has now implemented the use of their responsive scheduler on Infinite Campus, so students can sign up for what week they'd like to attend during the week during No Move Monday. Our soaring hunters recognition for quarter four will be our second annual trip to Valley Fair on Monday, June 5th, for all students to meet where exceeded this quarter's expectations. We had prom on Saturday, the 13th, for juniors and seniors at the Clyde Mountain Building, and it was masquerade-all-themed. And finally, for celebrations, we will be hosting our 98th Annual Honors Night on Thursday, May 25th, in our historic auditorium, where we will celebrate the honor court, which is the top 10% of the senior class and those who are in the honor DE award, either by nomination or academics. All are encouraged to event, to attend this event. Friday, May 26th, is when our yearbooks will be distributed to those who purchased one. This same day, our seniors will be able to pick up their caps and gowns, and we will have our senior assembly in the afternoon where we honor the graduating class. Speaking of seniors, their last day with us is on June 2nd, where they will be able to participate in graduation walks at the elementary school in the morning and tower tours throughout the day. That is all.
Thank you. And I'll grab the mic, but the next part, I need your help, is, I'll come around. So actually, if our student,
Do you want, you want the mic?
If our student representatives could stand and come over here, we have something very exciting. Each year, we have the Fred Hasi Scholarship drawn. And basically, Mr. Fred W. Hasi graduated from Duluth Central High School in 1915. Pursuant to amendments made to the trust of his family, the Fred W. Hasi Scholarship Fund provides an annual award for graduate from East High School and Denfeld High School who are enrolled in post-secondary school the fall of that same year. As outlined in the trust, the names of all graduating seniors from Denfeld and East High School are placed in the Fred W. Hasi Scholarship Bowl, and a winner and two runner-ups are drawn for each school. So we draw the names and we announce the winner, but then we don't announce the, the runner-ups because those go into a folder. So basically, we have the students, student reps draw the names, and we'll start with, why don't we start with Denfeld since we did East first for the student reports. So I have the names of the Denfeld graduates that qualify, and I'm going to put them in the bowl, and then you can draw a name. It's like the Oscars are saying. Get all the names? Great. So, got two more. These names are pretty exciting. All right. So, make sure they're all in there. And if you could close your eyes and draw a first, second, and third. Okay, great, got all three.
All there?
Yep, so which one, close your eyes and point to one. Okay, and then I'll put these as the runner-ups. So the name for Denfeld is Alexander Porter is our winner from Denfeld.
He's a speech team. He's a speech team member.
And there was no connection there. Yeah. And so I'm going to put these in order. And then if we could have our East person, Elsa, if you could come on. I'm just going to put these here for now. It looks like the bigger envelopes work better to get the names out. So if you could close your eyes and pick one name to start with. All right. And then two more. Thank you. Oh, you've got two more, great. So I'll put these in order, which you pull in. And our winner for East is Quinn Slatton. Quinn Slatton, thank you so much. And I'll leave this here for now, but Patty, if you want me to want to put them in the envelopes for us, that'd be superb and much appreciated. Thank you. So.
Do we know how much the scholarship is?
The scholarship is a little lower this year than it was last year just because the trust is, is starting to come to an end. And I, Ms. Paquette, do you remember the total this year?
1,500 each.
So, pretty decent amount of money. So on with the rest of the superintendent's updates. We have, we had our board workshop last Tuesday, a week ago. And some of the things we did in addition to closed session with my midterm evaluation was we reviewed a draft of our strategic roadmap video. We're going to be watching the, the final production. We took in three or four suggestions to the board when we moved it forward. We completed our strategic roadmap areas of mission, vision, and values. And then I provided an overview of the next steps for strategic planning, including what we're doing with our daily experiences, strategic corrections, operational plan, and vision card. And then we talked about sort of a variety of different topics that we might discuss in future board retreats. And some of them that I noted here were coming back to our three-year board plan to see where we are and see what needs to be done. We talked about having a budget summary and doing more with budget, and I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. And then also putting together progress monitoring. And I've got a draft or something to show you for, along those lines as well. But it was a great board workshop, and I appreciate the time that the board members put in in addition to regular board meetings to have those, those opportunities. Legislative updates. There's a lot going on right now, actually, probably as we speak. It's, from what I understand, the Senate approved their omnibus spending bill already, and the House may vote on it even as of tonight. These are highlights that were included from this weekend, but most, from what I understand, seem to hold true. One is a, and this is, it's pretty, pretty positive news for us. I think that there are some things that have some impact financially, but for the most part, there's really good news. And I want to say thank you for all of the people that lobbied and worked on those efforts. There's a lot of work by you as board members. There was work by the Duluth Federation of Teachers and other, other bargaining units, as well as by administration to lobby for things in favor of what, what will help our students. But we ended up with, or what it's looking like as of tonight is a 4% increase in the funding formula for next year and a 2% for the next year. And following in future years, it will be linked-in inflation. There was also a piece related to unemployment insurance for, for hourly workers. We were a little concerned because there wasn't funding behind that, but it does appear that there's funding for the first year, so that, that will at least give us an estimate of where the costs are. Third is that there was a big increase in the cross subsidy for special education, and that was funded at over 40%, 44% for this next year. And then it will be going up to 50% by the year 2027. Were also some Pell-Roch changes that appear to be moving forward related to terms and conditions of employment, including adult-to-student ratio in the classroom, student testing, and student personnel ratios that were part of, part of things moving forward at this point. There were quite a few other things, though, too. There was some changes in comp ed funding. There was some changes in comp ed funding, so we're being held harmless on that for the next couple of years, and we'll see what happens down the road. That's partly based on the universal free meals. We had some funding put into student support personnel aid, as well as community service, I'm sorry, full-service community schools. There was money put towards multi-tiered systems of support, which is a big part of our strategic plan. Also, funding to pay for orientation for paraprofessionals. I think it's, we talk a lot about onboarding and what we can do to recruit and retain, and so I think that's really exciting. And along those lines of recruiting and retaining, there's a fund for Black Men Teach, as well as Grow Your Own funding that have gone through. And also some aid increases in community education. So I would say that overall, there were many, many things that we asked for collectively and worked on together, and we have supports from, from the legislature to do so. I would put out there, though publicly, that there are still quite a few costs that we have, and as we move off from ESAR funding and things like that, you hear about some of the needs that we have in our schools, where we make some really hard choices. It's important for us to consider what might be able to be put back, what considerations do we have there, as well as what are the needs of the strategic plan that we're asking you to pass tonight, too, so we can really put our resources towards the things that we call out as our main priorities. Any questions so far? Alright. As far as the budget goes, we talked about the budget and an interest in having an update on budget. And we know that there was a lot going on in the past couple of months, waiting for the legislature to come through with some of this information. So now that that information, it appears that we'll have more definitive terms by the end of the week, that will allow us to put together an update for you that will be worthwhile. Last year, because it wasn't one of the bienniums, so there was less to talk about, and so now it's, and not less to talk about, but less to wait for, I should say. So now we're able to present in greater detail. And we're looking at having a committee, the whole meeting, on budget for May 30th. That's the Tuesday after the Memorial Day weekend at 4:00 PM. And that was based on input that Ms. Pickett gathered from the board. So we'll talk about budget, legislative impact of the budget, highlights from some of the ESAR spending, as well as information on the budget overall. And then we go into June with more opportunity for conversation of budget through the HR Business Committee, and then also at the regular school board meeting. As far as some of the updates on the strategic roadmap, and this is what I'm probably most excited about. There are many things that are exciting. And you see the different pages of the strategic roadmap before you in large form. And thank you Adele Wellens for putting that together. She's done so much in putting together the strategic plan, as well as the input there. But some of the highlights, and these were things that we put together at the, at the board workshop that we held a week ago tonight. We refined based on the feedback. We've had a lot of feedback from, from parents, a lot of feedback from staff and students as well. And we use that to refine our mission and our vision, as well as our values. And our mission for Duluth Public Schools is that every student, every day, will be empowered with learning opportunities for growth, creativity, and curiosity in preparation for their future in a global community. And the mission is really what it is that we're about. The vision is what is it that we're moving towards, what is it that we're trying to achieve. And the vision for Duluth Public Schools is that we provide an academically engaging, safe, and inclusive environment with high expectations and responsible use of resources. And then we had quite a few values, because we value a lot of things, but we were able to narrow them down to five values. And we had them listed in alphabetical order, but we felt that learning is really important, since we're a school system, so we put them in reverse alphabetical order. And they are learning excellence, equity, collaboration, and belonging. And then, some of the things that, just some of the other documentation we have. We have a strategic roadmap video that I'd like to show you. And this was put together with the help of Story North Productions. And again, Communications Officer Wellens worked quite a bit on it, but you'll see a lot of representation of a lot of different schools across the district. Located on the far western shore of Lake Superior, the Duluth Public Schools serves over 8,000 students in 18 schools and employs more than 1,500 staff members, ranging from teachers to support personnel. Here, we're committed to providing high-quality education to all students. Over the last year, we worked with school staff, families, students, and community members to create an updated three-year strategic roadmap. The school board approved plan lays out our goals as a district and how we plan to get there with your help.
It all starts with additional supporting every student. We want to improve instructional practices to best meet the needs of all our learners. We'll tap into the long-term tier system to find strategies to create positive learning environments. Students will get extra support to grow and improve through intervention and enrichment.
We want Duluth Public Schools to be a place where everyone feels a sense of belonging and accomplishment. It starts with strengthening relationships and building trust with all communities. To get there, we're creating an equity implementation and accountability plan to increase honorability, to think, behave, work, and lead with the mindset. As part of the plan, all staff will receive ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion training.
We're also improving our systems and processes, resource allocation, and support services. Our school district is focused on finding and hiring highly effective and dedicated staff to educate, support, and inspire our students to reach their full potential. We'll also create a district budget that keeps our students as the top priority, and we will utilize the financial forecasting model to assist the district to plan and forecast the district's financial future.
Finally, we're committed to providing some clean, safe environments for children and creating physical settings that are right for learning. We invite you to learn more about our strategic roadmap and the role you can play in helping us get there. Visit our website, learn more.
So we're really excited about that strategic planning video. And we also plan on doing some additional work with Story North Productions related to recruiting, some hiring videos and things like that, why it's a great, why Duluth Public Schools is a great place to live and work. Our strategic roadmap, as I mentioned, I'm going to pull it up here, but it's, it's right in front of you in larger things for the public to see. Let me pull it up here and board book for a second. So this is a six-page glossy handout that aligns where we are with our strategic roadmap and what direction we're going. And again, a strategic roadmap is so important. That old saying, if you don't know where you're going, any route will do, right? And I think it's important for us to make sure that we have a very, very clear direction for where we go as a district, and that we, we realize we can't do everything. We have to, we have to limit ourselves to a few initiatives, so that we can accomplish them well. But the, the front page is, as you see, then we go into just a short description of what our strategic planning process has been, as well as our new mission and vision that we talked about just a few minutes ago. And then our core values, they're listed with descriptions of what those core values mean to us. And you see, there's a lot of, a lot of photography of students, because our students are most important to us. We also have outlined our desired daily experiences. And the desired daily experiences are really at the center of our strategic planning process. If we think about what is it that our students want from an experience every day? What is it that our families want for themselves as they engage in the schools, as well as when they have their students come to our schools? What do our families want? And then as well, what does our staff want? What are the desired experiences of our staff on an ongoing basis? And so those are laid out in the pages that follow, with some of the themes in bold. And then, we talked about our three main priorities. Supporting every student, advancing equity, and improving systems. It was, we were trying to make sure that they're, they're clear and, and so that, you know, publicly accessible terms. When we first wrote it, we had a lot of educational charade, and we worked hard to try and make it something that you could describe to everybody. We're, we're about every student every day. That's, that's really what it comes down to with supporting every student. And we talked about, as well, some feedback that we got from the public, was that they really wanted us to spell out, what does that mean for us? And also, how are you going to get there? Because it's one thing to have a vision of, we're going to create equity, or we're going to have student success. But we've laid out in this area, which says, to accomplish this, we are committed to improving schedules, programming for our elementary, middle, and high school, focusing on literacy across the curriculum, all those different bullet points that lay out exactly what we're going to do. And we will be, this will not be the only time we share on this. In fact, really, this should be central to the work we do as a board moving forward. But there are the different things that we're working on related to supporting every student. Related to advancing equity, we're really focused on building trust with diverse communities in a variety of ways, aligning with the Minnesota Ten Commitments to Equity, engaging in implicit bias training, working to diversify our staff. And you saw some of those things in Grow Your Own and Black Men Teachers Funding that we'll definitely be taking advantage of. And then also partnering through frequent tribal consultation with the Fond du Lac and Jibway Tribe. We're serving all students, of course. But our connection and our work with, with the tribe is something that we explicitly note, because there's a different status for schools and states as they work with our American Indian students. Then improving systems. I think we all know that things can get better if we work at them. And really, thinking about how are we improving our, making continuous improvement to our student support services, thinking about processes, resource allocation, everything from how do we hire people, how do we retain a world-class workforce? How do we make sure that we're diversifying staff? How do we make sure that we're looking at our capacity and programming needs throughout the district? As well as thinking about class sizes that we've heard a lot about in recent past. Thinking about food equity and nutritional services. Also, safe and high-quality learning environments, as well as seeking new resources. So really, how do we keep those systems getting a little better every day? And then you have your final page, and interestingly, we have our new address, which will be the address for the District Services Center, and it is on Portia Johnson Drive. And the street number is 709 Portia Johnson Drive. So that's the address on the back of the, back of our strategic roadmap. Any questions so far on our strategic roadmap? We've worked on it quite a bit, so I understand that there might not be so many. Our strategic directions, we went through in detail. But then, again, the operational plan, and this is something that is always in draft form, it's something that's always being improved on. But when you, when you think, what's under the, like, this, this is the car. This is the outside of the vehicle that you see, and how we're going to get to where we need to go. But when you look at what, what's under the engine of that car? There's a lot more detail as far as what we're doing throughout each year. Different things that we're focusing on, related to improving our systems, related to advancing equity, and then also related to all those student supports that fall under the multi-tiered systems of support. So it's a lot of work, and a lot of those things are things that are ongoing. We also recognize that we can't do everything in one year, so we try to look at the scope and capacity of the organization, and what's going to impact individual teachers, what's going to impact our students and family. And we try and gauge so that we're not, we need to make sure that we are accomplishing what we say we're going to do, as opposed to over-promising and under-delivering. And then, as far as what's next, there's a lot, there's a lot coming next. Couple of things that I'd like to point out is, first of all, tonight, you would be voting, hopefully, to approve the strategic roadmap. Then, one thing that we talked about today is creating a graphic so that people kind of understand that systemic alignment from what happens at the board level affects what we do as a district, and what we do as a district affects what we try and engage in in our schools and our principals as they work with individual teachers, that affects the individual students. But then, in a reciprocal way, we need to make sure that we're listening through the system, so that we're listening to our students, and we're listening to our teachers, and we're listening to our principals, so that can shape our decision-making and also influence how we work as a board to monitor what we talked about and put resources towards what we say we need to do. We also are working on completion of a vision card, which really looks at those desired daily experiences and breaks it down in rubric form, so that we can look at the different, different things that our students, families, and staff are looking for, and then put rating areas in there, so that we can look at each year through surveys and other measures, making sure that we're monitoring where we are as a district moving forward. We also have action cards, which are kind of the smaller plan, like the subset plans underneath the plan. So if we have the plan, or if we have an area where we talk about, for example, advancing equity, maybe there's work done related to implicit bias, and we would have a plan related to what that looks like within this plan. So it's important that those are, they kind of nest together, and that there's alignment between what we have as our big overarching plan, as well as the smaller subset plans within. And then finally, we talked about progress monitoring. I think it's really obvious that what we watch, what we observe, is what gets done. And just like, you know, holding yourself accountable, you know, for example, if you're, you know, working on a goal of losing weight, if you don't get on a scale, except for once every three months, you're probably not going to know how you're doing. Whereas if we, if we have a continuous progress monitoring calendar, we will be able to look at what we're saying we're going to do throughout the year. And so I created, this is just a draft example. It's not meant as, as a representation for sure what we would do, but just, one way of looking at it would be that each month, we would have areas laid out in each of the three areas, so that as we're coming through the committee of the whole, we could look at various things under the topic. So for example, in August, maybe we're looking at our department improvement plans, and we're talking about an equity diagnostic tool under advancing equity, and maybe thinking about what we're doing for staff retention under improving systems. In September, you might be looking at things like elementary schedule and programming, the new changes that we're putting in place under supporting every student under equity. Maybe you're looking at the framework and how we're advancing the educational equity framework, and then maybe staffing for the improving systems. Then, in the middle of the year, we would have a state of the district, where we present overall on how we're doing on everything. And then throughout the months, we would be adding items again. And then at the end of the year, we would have our departmental and school success plans, an end-of-year report for the board. And so, working together with the board, as well as with my team, I'd like to, you know, this is again, just an example meant for conversation, but I'd like us to make sure that we have that well instructed, so that the measurement of our goals is really, really clear.
These reports would come, would be held at board meetings? Or is this what you would be checking in with your, at your QSC or QLC?
I would look at it as something we do through the committee of the whole process. And so really, rather than having, you know, right now, we kind of think about like, what's, what's permanent, what's fresh that we want to look at, and that's, that's important, too. But I think it's important for us to pace out and say, if we're focusing on elementary literacy, where are you going to see what we've been doing related to elementary literacy? If we say we're going to focus on a Grow Your Own program, where is it that we're focusing in that area? So that's, that's the way we look at it. And then finally, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you to the hundreds of stakeholders that were sharing their perspective in person. We had hundreds of people that came to various meetings. We had different stakeholder input, team meetings. And then there were thousands who shared their input by survey. So this is, this is really a co-constructive plan of the whole community. And this is our plan, it's not my plan, it's not the district administration plan, it's, it's the district's plan, but it's also Duluth Public Schools' community plan. And we couldn't have done it without all that help. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Comments?
There's a lot to comment.
I will. First of all, thank you for the legislative updates. We're at the last week here and of the session, and so really, I appreciate making sure the public know where we're at right now. I just really wanted to comment, like you did already, on the strategic plan, and both wanted to really thank our community and our parents and caregivers and our staff and our students, the many people who provided. the many people who provided input. So, as Superintendent Magus said, it was thousands of people who provided input, and that really was helpful. And some of you might not know, but as a board, we weren't attending those meetings, the in-person meetings and that. But then we got to see and hear all of the different feedback. And so, just a huge thank you to all of us on the board too for taking the time to really read through the feedback we got. And we participated then in many meetings ourselves to help create that vision statement and mission statement and those core values. But it was really based on so much work that was done by our staff and our community members and our parents and our students. And I just have been around this district long enough to see other strategic plans that have also been good. But it's just really, I have just a lot of gratitude as a board member with the time people took to help us put this together as a community that supports our public schools and wants us to be moving in a strategic new direction or strategic direction. So just really a thank you. And Superintendent Magus, thank you. I know you spent a ton of work. And Ray Queener, who was with TeamWorks, he was really a joy to work with and meet with for many hours, maybe, over the last year. And I, I look forward to, as a community member, as a future grandmother in the district, seeing this strategic plan move forward, so.
Thank you, and I would echo your comments. There was a lot of kind of in-out process where we received lots and lots of input. And we, the administrative teams would be looking at it, and school board would be looking at it, and our strategic planning team would look at it. And then there would be a new iteration of what we put together. So it was lots and lots of development. And I would, I would be remiss if I didn't thank TeamWorks International and Dr. Ray Queener, who led much of the process as well. I would also say that our intention around putting together a strategic plan, that when you hired me, I think that was one of the things that you asked for most specifically is you wanted a clear strategic plan for the district as well as ways that we're going to measure our progress. We didn't know in March of 2020, when you hired me, that it would be going into a big COVID pandemic. And so that impacted our timeline and what last year was kind of, to some degree, COVID part two. But this year has been really, really productive. And I just want to say thanks for your patience as a board, but I think the product we have is going to be really powerful in driving the district forward.
I would just add too, I really appreciate that you brought up the progress monitoring. And that's going to be really important just to make sure that we're keeping in line with the whole strategic plan. And I think it fits in really well with the Committee of the Hall because we're always hearing about a lot of amazing things that are happening in our district. And it'll be great to kind of connect the dots back to the plan. So that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would say what we will likely be doing is linking each of the board items to where does, what, what area of the strategic plan does it relate to? So that there will be a way for us to measure what it is that we say we're going to work on.
Thank you. I think that concludes your superintendent's report. So we appreciate it. Lots of good information. The last, it's off, yeah. So, part of the number eight on our agenda is this last item D, and it's the schedule of meeting events. And we've got that on Board Book. But just highlighting that next Monday, the 22nd, is the Gold Fine Gold Star Teacher Awards Ceremony. It's at Lincoln Park at 7:00. We also have a Friday, June 2nd Rockbridge Academy graduation at 1:00 at the Ivanhoe Street, Rockbridge School. We also then are back together with lots of graduations the week of June 5th through the 9th. And so, you've got that in your calendar. And we're back, we're back the week of June 5th to the 9th with more graduations. And again, just a note too that if you're looking at your second or third week into June is where we kind of come back in with our HR business, our policy, and then our call committee is not until like June 15th of next month. So we want to thank Secretary Pickett for always giving us a Friday calendar of events for the next week to keep us going.
Thank you as well to the, many board members who are attending tomorrow night's American Indian graduation dinner at White Iron Works as well. So thank you.
I had that on my list as well too, just sharing, reminding. Any other comments on the calendar of events? So then we move to agenda item number nine. It's A, the Committee of the Hall, B, Human Resource and Business Services, and C, Policy Committee. So I'll turn it to Assistant Superintendent Bonds to just give a brief reminder update of our call meeting held on May 2nd.
Thank you, Chair Local, and thank you everyone who eventually tunes in and watches the committee meetings. So we do appreciate those views. The May 2nd committee was pretty robust, as Betty Gray indicated. We had a presentation that was provided by our coordinator, Benise Quay Washington. It was an Educational Equity Advisory Committee update, which provided a lot of information regarding our Masawakan programming at Lowell. Director Lake provided an update regarding our Check and Connect programming that we have provided to our students. Check and Connect is our mentoring programming where 300 students are receiving mentorship. And so we really applaud the growth in that programming and opportunities for students. We believe also that our programming with Check and Connect has led to some increased graduation rates that we'll share also that day. Our Director Crane for Specialization and Special Services provided an update regarding our STEPS program. Our STEPS program is a new program that will be implemented next year for supporting students with special needs. It's called, we call it the Setting For program, but the name is actually going to be called the STEPS program. Also, Executive Director Zunich provided an update related to the PSS renaming suggestions with the community. Director Sparks provided an update related to the elementary schedule. And she provided a thorough presentation regarding all the hard work that the committee undertook to come up with a schedule again that we believe will really support all of our students at the elementary level. As part of the consent agenda, Director Williams provided an update related to the transportation waiver and also got that approved. And that was the conclusion of our agenda item.
Are there any comments or questions or review of our call meeting held a few weeks back? Again, like Assistant Superintendent Bonds said, those are great presentations, great information. You know, just really, that is the, sometimes the deep dive into, into other presentations. You can just, it's going to go to our HR, so it will go to Member Oswald.
Are we ready, Lynn?
We are.
All right. Since my two committee mates aren't here, I can float my way through this like nothing, be professional. But yeah, we're just, I guess.
Yes.
I should be a little more precise. Our business committee met on, on May 9th. And sadly, no guest presentations graced their, graced us with their presence. So, you know, I'm sure that that will change perhaps next month. HR updates, we had a lot of stuff going on. We hired eight people, seven people retired, fifteen non-certified reservations, and two people requested leaves of absence. We would like to give a warm welcome to Molly Eager as our HR assistant, working at the front desk. She'll be the first face you see when you walk in, so make sure to say hi to her. With the adoption of the new elementary specialist schedule, all elementary specialists went through a mini-fill on May 9th using contact language to select their school assignments for the fall. I don't know when those will be public knowledge, but I'm sure that everybody knows where they're going to be next fall. As of now, as HR Director Severance shakes her head yes. And what I think is kind of exciting is that all of our time sheets are now submitted electronically. Finally, who knew that could happen? Get that technology in our district, and now we can use it. So thanks to Miranda Fox for spending many, many hours trying to get that set up. And as of May 1st, everything's running smoothly? Yeah, yeah. Okay. It's running. With every new system, there's tweaks. Let's see here. Then, a large project HR will be working on next after this is developing the comprehensive new hire and orientation onboarding processes for new hires that the superintendent referenced in some of the legislative language. And whether or not that goes through, we're going to try to do it anyway, I'm sure. Because it's one of the best practices we can have for keeping our employees around. Record retention is another process that we'll be working on at the same time. District Call Now users can participate in this month's challenge regarding mental health awareness month for employees by completing 100 mindful minutes. Gets you qualified for the challenge. And according to the email that went out today from benefits, there is still time to join the challenge if anyone is listening and wanting to do so. Employee Assistant Program information is also sent out. And open enrollment for the PHEL health insurance plan ended on May 11th. So I hope everybody got that information. And for those that are retiring at the end of our school year, information about corporate allowances and pensions are coming up soon. So look for that. Contract negotiation requests are coming in. And additional six bargaining units are requesting initial meetings and will be scheduled as soon as we can accommodate that. And we currently have 34 openings for paraprofessionals and 22 maintenance and transportation openings. That's astounding amounts of vacancy. Ten child nutrition spots, among others. Summer school openings are getting filled, but there's still some openings there, and our, our students need you. So consider wanting to work for the district during those warm months. Enrollments, ooh, we like enrollments this month because we're seeing a slight uptick in enrollments with also with over 8,480 EM during a time when usually the opposite happens and it starts to go down. No, it's creeping up, and that's some really good news. So the budget at ATM was $79.95. So we're currently over 400 ATM higher than what we had originally budgeted for. Director Zunich has reason to believe with data and not with just her feelings that our enrollment will continue, to this upward trend, come fall. Child nutrition, our kitchen staff served 31,000 breakfasts and 62,000 lunches in April. Next school year, all meals will be free for all students. One breakfast and one lunch will be given to all students at no charge. The state of Minnesota has still not given us the guidance we need to share more, but we will share it as soon as we know more. Summer meals will be available for free for anyone 18 and younger. At, well, breakfast is going to be served from 7:30 to 10:00. And lunch will be 11:00 to 1:00. So come at 9:45, have some breakfast, eat, love your last lunch, I don't know. Monday through Friday, every day except the Fourth of July, these will be served, served at Stowe, MacArthur, Denville, Piedmont, Myers Wilkins and Lowell. Anyone can go to any of those schools. You don't have to be in those attendance areas. If you're by a school that's serving lunch, stop on by. We'll also be with the Boys and Girls Clubs as well as any other citywide groups if they need bag lunches. Stowe can provide bag lunches. And I do believe adults can purchase a meal when they, if they want to bring their kids to the, to the free lunch. So adults can come and eat too. The Denville Elementary School supper program meal passed their administrative review from the State of Minnesota's Department of Child and Adult Foods Programs in April with no significant findings except one. But our staff was complimented on the high-level service our staff provides our kids. That's an excellent thing to be found significant. The big news, the biggest news in child nutrition is all about the pizza. Our request for bids brought in only one single bid, and that company increased costs that we paid for pizza to about 50% higher. This increase in price is not something that the district feels that we can accommodate within our existing budgets. So fear not, we will still have pizza. But we are bringing back the old-school pizza. Our gazing staff is going to be cooking up pizza in-house for our students. I'm sure any number of nostalgic Gen X adults in the room are celebrating the thought of eating those rectangle slabs of cheesy goodness once again. Yum, okay. Our facilities staff continued to grind out finishing work orders and keeping up with all the nutty April weather issues of snow, sleet, hail, rain, freezing rain, you name it, and did quite well. One thing I'm proud of, because I drive by it nearly every day, is Denville's clock tower is nearly complete, just some inspection work. And to finish, Smith Bell and Clockers working on getting the clock operational so it will actually tell the right time. And Angling and Westellou can look, and as long as they know how to read an old-school clock, they will be able to tell what time it is in Westellou. What else do we got here? Oh, comments playground and field improvements are getting attention for the summer. Stowe finally got their new boiler, so yay, they can heat it up in the summertime. The public school stadiums, Track Lane 1 is still waiting for a resolution to the bonding problem. That line has been in our reports for, I guess, in two years, going on. We are gearing up for the finalizing construction of, on the hill of the District Services Center facility, building a bus barn. Pre-planning is actually happening to move to the KSC. And boxes are arriving to start packing up. Furniture being installed and walkthroughs are happening for staff to get a layout and a feel for the buildings. It should be really cool. The district is working with the county and city on finding a doable solution to Lowell's traffic issues problem for drop-off and pickup times. Additional property need, need to be purchased in the near future if our plans don't work out the way we think they're going to. Building operations staff continue to do amazing work while being very shorthanded. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's really tough to do that kind of work knowing that it's only one of you when it should be three. Technology is busy installing all sorts of new techy stuff in our buildings and transferring out of UHG. New security camera upgrades are happening in the middle schools. Over 1,000 wireless network access points are being added district-wide along with 550 new Dell desktop computers and 2,054 exactly new Dell Chromebooks for second, sixth and ninth grade students. Also, this summer is a $2 million ATF grades that will be happening district-wide. Upgrade 200 classrooms plus 21 portable smart boards on carts. This upgrade, upgrade will begin on June 12th and be worked on all summer. Transportation says that we have our second new bus in our possession, which is really cool. With just a few tweaks such as camera installation, they have finally been assigned new routes. Also, the new routing software will be put to the test and it will be used for all summer school routes in preparation for figuring out for the fall. We need bus drivers, of course. We train you. If you want to drive, we will work our damnedest to make it happen. Give HR a call. We may be able to purchase four newer used buses to replace the oldest in our fleets if we can find funding. That's always the key. And thank you for doing the best with our students and our buses. On to resolutions. We have donations as usual and grants. We have a resolution authorizing the superintendent to be our official with authority as required by M.D., otherwise known as an IOWA. We have a resolution just updating bank account signs. On the consent agenda, we have an updated job description for technology field support technicians. And also a resolution to approve our new facilities manager, Ryan Brown, to be able to approve invoices and purchases not to exceed $25,000. This is an increase from the $5,000 that it was previously at. I'm sure I'm hoping he'll update us on those purchases and his monthly reports, and I have no reason to doubt otherwise. Button braziers are there, and there's a couple of them. Bids, RFPs and quotes, bid 1303 is a one-year extension on dairy products. So you know that we will have So you know that we will have milk to drink with those free school lunches. RFP 314 is for service contracts, so we can service all of our copiers, which are hugely important if you're working with paper, but we have technology now, so maybe not so much. District property updates is the first report in a very, very long time that we do not have an update from Greg Holmer. Thank you, Mr. Holmer, for your work in helping us with our real estate needs. Also, some great photos are included on Board Book of the progress of our new buildings and in our new buildings up on the hill. So look them up on Board Book through the school board page. If you go to the district website and then if you go to the school board page, you can find Board Book. Contracts, expenditure contracts has many facilities related contracts along with teaching and learning, Office of Education Equity and a few others. It's three pages worth, there were quite a few contracts written. And low cost contracts for a home prop to have a true North American for fiscal year '23 and a teacher student, a student teacher agreement for fiscal year '24. Revenue contracts have one single one from MDE regarding our project over grant and there was one grant application for Denville Drama and another for our FIAD department to work on maintenance on our bike fleet. I'm assuming it's pedal bikes and not motorbikes because we all make our own motors with our feet. So that concludes the business report.
Board members, any questions or comments on our HR business meeting? It was good and I just have one clarification on the, I think you mentioned something about, it was right when you were talking about Lowell and the work that St. Louis County and we're gonna do on the arrival and departure transportation. And you said something about we might be purchasing, have to purchase land? Is that in relation to the Lowell thing that we might have to do something to elongate the exit and entrance? And maybe there's some land we can buy, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a little triangle, little triangle of land that was in the way for us to be able to move and do that. And Executive Director Severance, do you have any update on that or no?
Um, yeah, actually the purchase has gone through. So we were able to coordinate that with attorneys and the homeowner to get that segment that we need to widen the entrance off of Rice Lake Road.
And when we got an earlier report from St. Louis County, it looked like they were doing roadwork on that, on Rice Lake anyway, and that they were going to then do some work with that? Is, so we purchased the land, but when St. Louis County works on Rice Lake Road, they will do that work for us?
Yes.
Yes.
We're also looking at what we might do as far as pickup and drop off. There's possibility of other changes there, but we'll keep the board abreast as we learn more.
Are they gonna come back and do a new presentation for us? Or are they gonna just kind of work on what was presented to us before?
We'd be glad to have them come back if the board would like and/or I can share during, we could share during our business services updates and see if that fills the board's interest. And if not, we can bring them in for more detail.
I just appreciate the update on that just because I know that that's a big issue for our families at Lowell and just making sure our kids are safe. So, yeah, I would appreciate just continued updates on that and what that looks like.
Sure.
And I would have shared that same comment, like, you know, we kind of worked on a temporary solution. They put that pork chop in and then we got a report that that wasn't as effective as we should. So the continued work on our leaders and working with Lowell and their families is appreciated. Just those little details, it's not a strategic plan, it's not achievement, but those little things in our neighborhoods and our community, it's important to them. So that's a good thing.
Thanks, I agree.
Yeah, and that just is, I think, a great example of our intergovernmental committee of school board members and city council and county commissioner also kind of talking about an issue and then working with our park facilities staff and professional staff to make things happen. I just wanted to verify again, Rice Lake Road is a county road, so snow plowing is done by the county, right? On that road?
So there's work we're doing with the county and we're doing some work with the city related to the neighboring road that's a private road at this point. I would also say our new facilities manager, Brian Brown, coming in with some fresh eyes. I mean, we've had great facilities management in the past too, but just sometimes when there's a new perspective, sometimes there's some new ideas for what could ever change.
Yeah, and I agree with the comments that have been made, just I think have each updated, whether it's through our own staff or other staff that are working on that.
We'd be glad to.
Great, well, example.
Can we talk pizza?
I know, yeah, we can.
I mean, so my question is, you know, we have 8,400 plus students and this is an important topic for them. So are we looking at box pizza that's gonna be prepared or heated or in our kitchens?
I believe the staff will be making the pizza, the kitchen staff will be made on site.
Oh wow.
In all of our buildings? Or?
I don't know that.
Okay, okay.
Are we bringing in a special trainee?
All I know is people are really excited about this part of pizza.
Oh, they are, okay. So no more Domino's delivery?
And veggie pizza's important too.
I was just gonna say that.
We need to make sure we have veggie pizza on the menu for those students that.
I would refer that Sheila Oak's goes back in, it'll pass.
A high quality veggie pizza that isn't just cheese.
Yep, one of the comments was even if it's just olives, which is technically not a vegetable, but still.
We just might have to go out and have some lunch in the school.
And then, I mean, I don't want to, pizza will not be on the menu every day, right? I mean, not now, I mean.
It's one month.
Yeah, so it's not an everyday option. Again, we're moving into the new legislation that offers free lunch to everyone. So that, that's great, but again, like many things happening in the legislature, we're excited about, but it'll be interesting next year to see. And our CFO, our district, you know, will be looking for more feedback from you. Not necessarily, no, but even as we're getting the money and we're in the next year and there's a new legislative session and it's more in the bonding year, it'll still be interesting to see all the streams of money that, 2.2 billion in education, according to our latest reports, how that really looks when boots are on the ground and money is being given to the specific districts and what that means for our, our community here. It'd be fascinating.
I have one follow-up, food-related question. So about the free lunches, which is great during the summertime. And you mentioned collaborating with different community organizations that might be serving children who need food. What does that look like? What do those partnerships look like? How, how do we connect agencies that might be serving a lot of our youth who need meals with those meals?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I know Sheila Oak, our Food Nutrition Manager, has reached out how she does it in the summertime. I'm not sure because the last three summers have been unusual. So I think this summer with the new directives, there will be some changes. And I will give that answer for you, it's a great question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just kind of a follow-up. I was gonna say this earlier, I appreciated our communications, Adele already getting out about the free lunch programs and it's out on social media, the summer programming for food. And so thank you for getting that out early. That might also be some ways that other organizations that serve our youth connect with us. It's just, we got some early advertising going, so a good thing, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our last committee recap from a policy committee held May 2nd with the chair of that committee, Member Lautler.
Okay, this is on, okay.
Yeah, and it is a robust policy.
Yes, we had a lot of, lot of good conversation and as has been said at our other committee meetings, we have a lot of discussion, a lot of staff presentation at all of our committees and with our policy committee, which happened on Tuesday, May 2nd. Just again, wanna thank the staff that bring policies forward to us. They put a lot of work into reviewing policies, bringing committees together to look at policies. And so, so just a thank you on that. And also, just for the public's perspective background again, many of the policies that come in front of us are model policies from our Minnesota School Board Association and our Minnesota Superintendent's Association. They're based on state statutes, state law. And most of our policies are reviewed over a two-month period of time, four different meetings. And so the meeting we had on May 2nd had a number of policies for a first reading. And again, all of the items on our policy meeting are gonna be on our consent agenda as well in terms of voting on that. But the first policy, I've been just reading the purpose of each policy and just again, all of our policies have a number of different sections on it as well as at the end of the policies, they cross-reference the state statutes and laws. And then if we're reviewing and revising them, it has the dates that we last reviewed them. But I'm just gonna, with each of them, just read the short purpose as I have done with all of our policies during this report. So again, Policy 901 was Community Education. The purpose of this policy is to convey to employees and to the general public the important role of community education within the school district. Community education and its functions stream includes community education, early childhood and family education, ECFE. And then each policy has a general statement of the policy itself. And I won't read that right now because they're kind of long. So that was the first policy we reviewed and was presented by Jeremy Rock, who's our Community Education Director. The second policy was Policy 712, Video Surveillance Other Than On Buses. And this is replacing a policy, 318A Video Security Other Than On Buses. And again, the purpose of this policy is to maintain the health, welfare, and safety of students, staff, and visitors while on school district property and the protection of school district property are important functions of the school district. The behavior of individuals who come onto school property is a significant factor in maintaining order and discipline and protecting students, staff, visitors, and school district property. The school board recognizes the value of video electronic surveillance systems in monitoring activity on school property in protecting the health, welfare, and safety of students, staff, visitors, and school district property. And then the next policy we spent time reviewing was Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students from IEPs From School Grounds. And, where do you find that one? Did I skip over it? I said, sorry, C, I'll go back to that one, was 509, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. And this is replacing Policy 5035, Non-Resident Enrollees. And the purpose of this policy is the school district desires to participate in the enrollment options program established by the Minnesota Statute Section 124D.03. The purpose of this policy is set for the application and inclusion procedures used by the school district in making said determination. And again, there's a lot under this policy. And then, and again, that's replacing 5035. Our next section was 532, again, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs From School Grounds. And the purpose of this policy is to describe the appropriate use of peace officers and crisis teams to use a restrictive procedure or remove if necessary a student with an IEP from school grounds. Let's see, the next policy was, and I wanted to mention, let's see, the first two, Community Education and Video Surveillance, those are new. The enrollment of non-residents, that's a model policy again. D that I just read, that's a mandatory policy that we have. And then on the next one, 514, Bullying Policy, that's also mandatory. And we made a lot of language changes in that policy. And again, really want to recognize Jacob Laurent and many staff who worked on that. Sorry, my little sticky notes here. Chair local, okay. The purpose of this policy is to prohibit bullying behavior and assist the school, Duluth School District in its goal of preventing and responding to acts of bullying, intimidation, violence, and other similar disruptive behavior. The Duluth School District strives to provide safe, secure, and respectful learning environments for all students in school buildings, on school grounds, school buses, and at school-sponsored activities. A safe and civil environment is needed for students to learn and attain high academic standards and to promote healthy human relationships. And then this new section, revised section is the end of the purpose. A civil, a safe and civil environment is needed for students to earn and attain high academic standards and to promote healthy human relationships. Bullying, like other violent or disruptive behavior, is conduct that interferes with a student's ability to learn and/or, and/or a teacher's ability to educate students in a safe environment. The school district cannot monitor the activities of students at all times and eliminate all incidences of bullying between students, particularly when students are not under the direct supervision of school personnel. However, to the extent such conduct affects the educational environment of the school district and the rights and welfare of its students and is within the control of the school district in its normal operations, the school district intends to prevent bullying and to take action to investigate, respond to, and to remediate and discipline for those acts of bullying which have not been successfully prevented. The purpose of this policy is to assist the school district in its goal of preventing and responding to acts of bullying, intimidation, violence, reprisal, retaliation, and other similar disruptive and detrimental behavior. And again, many other sections under this policy. And then the next policy was, and I should have, my, my other school board members on this policy committee helped me read this. Members Adham and Member Sadoski, I will do that next time. Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of People's Records in Public Notice and Juvenile Justice System Request for Information. And this is replacing 5060, so replacing Policy 5060. And this is also a mandatory policy. Let me just find that quick. We may be, for numbers now that are in front, maybe it's us and looking for.
The 515?
Yes.
Do you want me to read the purpose?
Yes, would you mind including?
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, the purpose of 515, Protection and Privacy of People's Records, the school district recognizes its responsibility in regard to the collection, maintenance, and dissemination of people records and the protection of the privacy rights of students as provided in federal law and state statutes.
Thank you. Okay, so those are all first readings, so they'll be having a second reading in our June meeting. And then we have policy for our second reading and this was our overdose medication policy, 516.5. And there were no changes that we made in the second reading. The purpose of this policy is, as a means of enhancing the health and safety of its students, staff, and visitors, the school district will acquire, administer, and store doses of OPIA, specifically Narcon, and administration devices or kits for emergency use to assist a student, staff member, or other individual believed or suspected to be experiencing an opioid overdose on school district property during the school day. on school district property during the school day. So that's our second reading. And then the last list of reviews were more informational and it's our regulations and forms. And so there were a number of those that were presented to us. Again, it's really the practices and processes that we use with different policies. So a number of them under that. And again, all of these items will be on our consent agenda. And yeah, so that was our hefty meeting. And we look forward to many of these policies being a part of our handbook in some fashion and hearing more about our handbook in the next month or two. Member Oswald.
I was just briefly looking at Policy 516.5, the final overdose medication. And in Section 3, under Definitions, number B, the naloxone. Naloxone coordinator. There's a line in there at the, at the end of that paragraph that says, insert title of staff person appointed as coordinator. So, and it's obviously not inserted. So I just was curious if it was going to be inserted before we approve it or if it needs to.
Could you point out again the section in of the policy?
Section 3, Definitions, letter B, at the end of that paragraph.
Yeah, there's a blank there.
Would that be Crystal?
I believe so, but we will make sure that's addressed at the next reading.
This is the second.
This is the second.
Oh, this is the second.
This is the second.
I think, isn't it, the intent of the policy is that each building has a designated. So I don't think you can really fill that in until this policy is trained and that the principals might then appoint the person.
Well, and I don't think we want to put names unless we're required by law into a policy, because then we have to revise it every time on there's a name change. So in this particular policy.
Is, for purposes of moving forward with this, is there a coordinator at the administrative level? Not, you know, we've got that the principals, you know, in each of the buildings will report to, is that you?
That would be me as the assistant superintendent. But we also have a district nurse who is the one who facilitated the updating of this policy.
So is that the name we could or shouldn't insert here?
It's not asking for a name, it's asking for the title of a person. So it, you know, if it's, if it's the senior nurse, whatever, or whatever.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And just also keep in mind that this policy is not required that we pass it. So we're choosing to pass it. And so, you know, we can make minor changes like this in the policy. So I would agree with that. Thank you for pointing that out, Member Oswald.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see it before, but I just, I said it earlier.
Yeah, and I think, so are we in agreement with that minor change in the policy of putting assistant superintendent, no name, or designee?
Yes.
Okay.
We hear the motion.
Patty G. It's going to be in the consent agenda. And I think when we're making a minor change like this, I don't know if we have to have a formal motion.
Um, we don't, we don't. There's, you know, is it cleaner and more purposeful with a motion to change it? Yes. My training is always, it really is a board's decision. If the board wants to, it's not necessarily mandated by any particular, you know, you know, Robert's Rule of Order. It is the will of a board. And we have tended to be a more formal board. We follow, you know, pretty much a guideline with that. So if there is a motion to make that minor change in a second, I don't think there's anything that says that's a wrong move.
I don't either. I would just say as the policy chair, just kind of, a lot of policies where we have a reference of a staff person, it's a general, you know, often it is assistant superintendent who often is overseeing some of the staff related to our policies, so.
But in this case, we're all in agreement then on the superintendent and.
Assistant superintendent.
Assistant superintendent and designee.
Assistant superintendent and designee. So just for clarity.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and then again, all of these policies and this one for the second reading and will be on the consent agenda. And this was, it's been an exciting year. I'll, we'll give more updates in June, kind of, of our policy meeting. But we've really moved a lot of policies forward. And that is one of the key roles of our board, is to create policies or work with our staff to move policies. So thank you, board members, and particularly Paul Sandholm and Amber Zadovsky, who serve on the policy committee with me.
I don't think I've ever seen a policy report of 151 pages. But because we kept, you know, I think, I like that we give the old policy and put it right in our doc, so we can see, you know, where you're going and the dates and the reflections and the changes.
Thank you, and that's a lot of work, Patty, so we really want to thank her for making sure we have all we need to review the policies and to make recommendations to the staff presenting to us and to be very thoughtful in our policymaking role, so.
Thanks. And also to Director of Secondary, who's doing a lot of work with the handbook, Jen Larva, put a lot of work into it as well.
So again, we are now moving on to item number 10 on our agenda. It's General Board Committee update. So this is an opportunity if anyone has done or attended, you know, the committees that we're appointed to or other community events. I know that yesterday I was able to attend at the short notice. I know many of you responded. Superintendent Vegas put out a word that we were going to see the, is the vice chair of the Minnesota Department of Education, is that a role? Or assistant director, assistant commissioner, came to Duluth and visited Lincoln and assistant superintendent, or superintendent Vegas and Director Larva and myself were able to, you know, and Principal Brian Kesmercheck. And it was just really interesting, I was sharing with, by a member, Laffer Kemp, just to listen to Principal Kesmercheck and teachers within Lincoln share the successes and still the challenges. But our, our assistant commissioner was really engaged and really thankful and to build relationships with that. You want to add anything, Superintendent Vegas?
I would just add that it's always a great opportunity to highlight our programs. And I think that Lincoln in particular is doing so many things related to, as you said, the community schools, but thinking about the social emotional supports for kids and behavioral supports. It's starting to become an exemplar school where we're receiving visitors from other districts who are coming to look at what is it that we're doing so that they can model and replicate. So it's not just about improving the systems we have. It's about serving as a colleague and mentor to other districts too. So we're very proud of the work at Lincoln Park, as well as just having a visitor like Assistant Commissioner Mansfield come visit.
And just, I'll just share with you that I have also been invited and as a board chair to our tribal consultation. And we had one just recently. It's our fifth tribal consultation with our Bundelac leadership. And they continue to challenge and support. And I think they're also really appreciative of the relationships that we're building. And I look forward to a May 23rd and May 24th, other tribal conference that we're, we've been invited to. It's an honor to be welcomed, like we are, to more tribal partnerships. And so it's important to the consistency. They're starting to know the team and really have a good, a good ability to hear them and understand, and they do the same, so. And I continue my work on the Board of School Administration as a governor appointee to the BOSA Board to make sure that our superintendents, our community ed directors, our special ed directors, our assistant superintendents, and all of our principals, and all the deans of students have the appropriate licensures for the roles they have in our district. And it's an important role, and I'm always proud. Duluth Public Schools has a really exemplary record of making sure that those positions are licensed or they are requiring a variance, and variances are granted by the committee I serve on. So any other community or committee reports?
Sure, I'll give a little update on EAC. As you all know, at our last COW, Subcommittee on Yudwe Language Programs came and presented, which was great. EAC is really, there's a lot of deep commitment to equity in that group. And they've developed a lot of thoughtful and robust subcommittees. And there's a new one that was recently gaining traction that's going to be looking at grade level reading proficiency. So I just wanted to give that update. And then I attended the Compton Bike, it wasn't really a Bike to School, but it was a event that happened just before, was it?
Bike rodeo.
Bike rodeo, it sure was a bike rodeo. Yeah, they had all sorts of different obstacle courses for biking. They had a lot of community partners, like the Duluth Park System. Spirit Mountain was there. Some of our SROs were there. It was really great turnout. And then this Friday, I'll be going to the Little Cultural Night for a little bit, hopping in there. And then HomeCraft is having a carnival too Friday night, which I'm going to volunteer in.
A couple of updates. Well, you heard actually from one of our speakers on Thursday is our Quality Steering Committee, which is our later management committee. And two board members serve on that, Member Oswald and myself. So we will be spending three hours with teacher leaders and principals in our administration at that meeting. That assistant superintendent, Buzz, helps go to the facility. And does a great job, by the way. So that's happening. And then I'm looking forward to the 25th, from 6:30 to 8, going to the Great Lakes Aquarium with our Head Start Governing Board and families for their end-of-the-year celebration. And it's always a fun event. And because of COVID, we haven't been able to do it in the ways in the past. And so it will be a fun event at the Great Lakes Aquarium. And also because Sherri Williams is here, I just want to hold her up. She attended, along with some staff, a national conference where they presented on our playscape programming. And Sherri has mentioned that in some of her updates in the past. And I think you put some stuff on social media, right, Sherri? Yeah, so that was exciting. And yeah, so those are a few things. Looking forward to graduation weeks. Yeah. Thank you. Going on then to number 11 is our consent agenda. So I'm looking at our consent agenda. Again, it's been in our board book for a while, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Member Sandholm approves, the second. Member Oswald, all those in favor? Or is there any discussion on our consent agenda? It has approval of minutes, action items under our finance and the HR. It has policy readings and all of the committee reports that you heard tonight. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0 for our consent agenda. Moving on then to our number 12. We have a number of resolutions, and I've already set all of us up to read those. And so our first one is A, acceptance of donations.
All right, I will read that one. So I will move Resolution B 5-23-3958. Whereas Minnesota's Statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept donations by resolutions, resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full and, whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations. And so I see a few different contributions here. Want to Compton and Lester Park in the east. So, and then this is a roll call vote.
It is.
Yeah.
Is there a second? So ask me.
So I make this motion.
Second. So Member Zadovsky makes the motion. Member Laffer Kemp seconds, and so it is a roll call vote?
Sounds good. Member Laffer Kemp?
Yes.
Member Loefel?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Sandholm?
Yes.
So that will, so that motion carries 5-0. So going on to our next resolution by Member Laffer Kemp. Okay, Resolution B 523-3959, acceptance of grant awards to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute 46503 requires the school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas the acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And it's the Duluth Public Schools Board of Trustees Endowment Fund, which is administered through the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation. And I happen to be the board liaison as well. An award of $2,000 to HomeCraft, to a teacher for one of the many grants that teachers received through this foundation. But this is specific for this $2,000 award for a really cool literacy project. So I move Resolution B 523-3959. Is there a second? Member Zadovsky seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries 5-0.
Next resolution is, Member Oswald.
Designation of the superintendent as the Identified Official with Authority Iowa for Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, serves financial. Whereas the Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, requests that school districts annually designate the superintendent as the Identified Official with Authority Iowa for the MDE External User Access Recertification System, serves financial. The Identified Official with Authority is responsible for assigning job duties to the appropriate school district staff and authorizing access to MDE secure systems. His annual review and designation of the superintendent as Identified Official with Authority is in accordance with State Access Security Standard 1.0. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the superintendent of schools be designated the legal authorized representative to serve as the 23-2024 Identified Official with Authority Iowa for MDE serves financial for the school district. I move Resolution, Resolution B-5-23-3960.
Is there a second? Member Sandholm seconds, all those in favor of resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries 5-0. Our next resolution is Member Sandholm.
Resolution B 523-3961, Authorized Bank Accountant Signer, May 2023. Resulted by the School Board of Independent School District, number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota. It is hereby authorizes the following. The district building would be a memorial, banking institution, harbor port of credit. And we have a new authorized signer, Sheila Stevens. I move Resolution B 523-3961.
Is there?
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Oswald seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Resolution, Member Laffler Kemp.
Okay, all right. So, Resolution SP 523-3962, School Board Member Attendance at Tribal State Relations Training. Resolved that Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay cost incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Tribal State Relations Training. I move SP 523-3962.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Zdowski, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Our next resolution by Members Zdowski.
Sure, it's Resolution 5-23-3963, School Board Member Attendance at Managing Difficult Conversations with Colleagues and Constituents Workshop. Resolved that the Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay cost incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend the Managing Difficult Conversations with Colleagues and Constituents Workshop.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Our last resolution, Member Laffler Kemp.
Resolution, thank you, this is kind of long. So, I move Resolution SP 523-3964, and this resolution is a resolution that for a number of years now, we have presented and passed as a board, and it continues work we're doing as a district to educate the public. But this resolution declares declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This resolution declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the Duluth Public School District to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 70,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas Minnesota has 497 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 8.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state 6.6 billion in each year, of which 105.5 million is paid by taxpayers. Minnesota has the 44th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a high priority of the school district, and whereas support of the Second Amendment Rights of Law-abiding citizens goes handed, and with keeping guns away from people that should have them. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 2nd, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton. People across the United States will recognize national gun violence, where state and where orange contribute to Hadiya Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters who went out in the woods, and orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2nd, 2023, the first Friday in June in 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas we knew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledged to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep children safe. Therefore be it resolved that the Duluth School Board declares the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. We encourage all schools to support the local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Member Sandholm, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That ends our resolutions in 12 and 13. That brings us to 13D, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our strategic roadmap. Member Oswald makes the motion.
Second.
Second, by Member Laffler Kemp. So, all those in favor of approval of our six posters in front of us and the video and all of hard work, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And then, we also have 13E, I'm looking for a motion of approval for our Head Start Transportation Deficiency Corrective Action Plan.
I move.
Member Laffler makes the motion. Member Sandholm makes the second. Is there any questions? I know Director Williams is here, but we presented at Cal, I just want to give her an opportunity, if she thinks there's something, I'm thinking it's just going to be... So, I'm going to look at all those in favor of accepting the Head Start Transportation Deficiency Corrective Action Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. That brings us to number 14, it's questions and anything other? Seeing none, then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. That's Member Oswald, the second.
Second.
By Member Laffler Kemp, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our school board meeting is adjourned.